Liberty and Justice.
It's okay, roll call, Jared.
Mr. Adams?
I'm on the, I'm on the phone line, Jared.
Okay, Julie Chomarke Kukro. Mr. Harley?
Here.
Dr. McComby?
Here.
Dr. Rig?
Here.
Dr. Shaffer?
Here.
Mr. Steve?
Here.
Mr. Troth?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Okay, very good. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Uh, nobody signed up for public comment. I do not have a board president message. Um, IAEA, Ask Me, SGA, or STUCO. Nothing hurt. I do wanna talk a little bit about the, the junior high. At the academic committee meeting, we had an excellent report from that young man. Incredible individual with, with tremendous poise. And there's a lot of activities going on down at the junior high school in part because of that, um, student government's leadership. And, and I certainly want to recognize and congratulate them for a job well done there. Okay, student or superintendent's report.
Um, Rob's not here tonight to give his superintendent a report, but, um, I did want to bring up that today's solar eclipse day for our students went extraordinarily well. Didn't have a whole lot of negative feedback. Uh, we had a lot of kids having a lot of fun at, at all of our different buildings. Um, again, so it went pretty much without a hitch. Um, at least we haven't, we haven't heard any, any type of issues. Um, the other thing I wanted to share that I, I know Rob has some information. I know that, uh, there were some board members that, that had asked me regarding, um, the swimming team and just with some of the athletic events. Um, Rob has something planned, and so that should be coming at our next one.
Okay, very good. Okay, solicitors report. Ron, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, really, I, I couldn't remember if we gave the update last meeting about, um, just some of the changes that have been coming through the Supreme Court, uh, if it relates to board members and social media. You're gonna probably get a page come, or a policy eight sixteen point one, or eight sixteen, uh, that, that the board is gonna have to take a hard look at. Essentially, it's talking about social media, uh, and what we're allowed to do with posts and responses and things of that nature to ensure that, you know, a board member who may be holding out a personal view is holding it out as a personal view and not as a board member compared to a board member speaking on a, a item of, um, a school district matter. So those really have to be differentiated, and that's what that policy is gonna kinda analyze now, uh, based on the Supreme Court case that came down. So that would be my update. Like I said, if you haven't received that policy update, it's on its way.
Okay, Ron, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Uh, there are no discussion, uh, item this evening. Uh, so down to approval of minutes and the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Seven seconds.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on the agenda or the minutes? Nothing hurt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, um, down to the reports. I apologize to the board that I did not get out my normal report in advance. We'll try to get that out to you tomorrow. Uh, but basically, under personnel, uh, we had, we had some, um, um, some hirings. Um, we also, uh, note, noteworthy is that, um, the ICTC must vote on their budget prior to the twenty-third of May. Um, they bought some, um, uh, vape detectors and, and had some updates, uh, for health and safety. Uh, they also bought some touchless faucets. Uh, under the principals' report, uh, there were some routine items there, but the one thing of note is that the ICTC is encouraging all of the member districts to send their students up to sort of a quick orientation, um, in the sixth grade. I know they always send somebody up in the ninth grade to pick their, um, careers if they want to follow one of those tracks, but they're suggesting that we send somebody up in the sixth grade. One of the interesting aspects of this is that it will qualify for three-three-nine artifacts. Okay, which is, which is something that we're required to do. Um, uh, they've also are trying to get some grants, uh, for the welding program. Um, is there anything you wanted to add on that sixth grade? Cause I think Indiana is thinking about it, isn't it?
We are. Um, now, I don't know a whole lot about.
Okay, well, anyway, it's, it's something that they're encouraging all of the districts. Um, under adult education, um, they're still working on, uh, the, the nursing program at several campuses down in the Pittsburgh area. Um, we did, uh, uh, discuss in, in the solar eclipse and, uh, public school faci- facility improvement grant. The ICTC is going after one of those. We also had a fairly lengthy discussion on, um, reviewing some of the academic programming and where that needs to be expanded. So that's my report from, from there. Again, I'll apologize for not getting that written report out to the board in, in advance. Sue, what's going on over there?
We haven't met since our last meeting, but just a reminder that our convention is next Tuesday at the Indiana High School at five fifteen. And also a reminder that our fundraiser for the Excellence in Education Foundation is this coming Saturday, six to nine at the Eagles.
Very good. Okay, outreach committee, Jim.
We did not have a meeting. However, the Horseman Open House happened on the second. I've not heard an update how that went. Uh, our next meeting is May twentieth.
I'm gonna give them a quick update, Jared. What?
Yeah, we had, I think, sixteen or seventeen people come through that evening. It was a mixture of both. I think people interested in it as a, on the business side. Um, we also had a couple, I think, neighborhood people who just kinda wanted to walk around as well. Um, Strategy Solutions is now kind of setting up, um, is reaching out and talking to Rob and I about setting up interviews with kind of the different people who attended that evening to really, I think, gauge interest. But all in all, I think it was a good evening, so. They allow us to give more individual tours than anything, so.
Anything else, Jim? Okay, Quintina, what's happening over at the library?
Okay, I mentioned the library hired a new executive director. Unfortunately, it didn't work out, and so they are still searching for a new executive director.
Oh, that's like almost getting married.
Yes, so I will meet with them on Wednesday for the governance committee meeting and take it from there.
Um, my sympathies and empathies to the library and the board. It's a lot of work to come up, come up short like that.
Yes.
Okay, PSBA. Sally, you were in Harrisburg.
Here I am, yes. I went to the PSBA advocacy in Harrisburg this morning, and there were approximately one hundred other school board members there. Uh, we met with our senators or, and our representatives, and we first had, um, the, oh, wait, wait. I can't remember his name. Oh, well, it'll come to me. We, okay, and then we, uh, so I met with Jim Struzey, and I was the only one to meet with Jim because I was the only person there from Indiana County. And we also met with Joe Pittman, and there are two other people from two different districts that were not in Indiana County, were there too, two other board members. But the number one thing that they had, the number one issue that we all had to talk about, and they gave us talking points, although, you know, I didn't need any on this topic. The number one was school districts need cyber charter school funding reforms. And everyone is up in arms about this, and it's been going on for so long. I call it the, the fleecing of public school in Pennsylvania because the money that's just being drained from districts. And then, you know, we were in discussion about a lot of the things that come with that that we have already talked about at this board. So hopefully, because every single person that met, every board member that met with their representatives talked about this and told about their challenges, and people have different challenges, hopefully, something will be done with that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Sally. Sue, academic and extracurricular.
Yes, we had a very lengthy committee meeting last Monday evening. Uh, as President Schruth said, we had a very nice presentation with Mr. Lane Wolf, who is the junior high STUCO president, very active student council at the junior high school. We also, uh, talked about the Ampli- Amplify Coaching Plan for consideration, and that's a program for the literacy program where experts come in and model lessons, give feedback and suggestions with the K through five teachers. So that was just discussed, nothing, there's nothing to vote on this evening. Uh, we also talked about the Child Care and Aspiring Teacher Program update. Career and Tech Ed Centers, including ICTC, are looking into articulation agreements with higher ed institutions to hopefully build a pathway for future teachers, so we're happy to hear that. Uh, we heard, uh, from Mr. McElhaney at the high school about staffing projections for twenty-four, twenty-five. Mainly, we've been talking about social studies, position that is, has not been filled. We also briefly talked about the repurposing of Horseman, um, and that was just when the open house was happening. Uh, invitations went out, emails, et cetera. And then we had a curriculum committee update where Mr. Heinrich assured us that every teacher has a say regarding the curriculum. They meet on Act Eighty Days, and their curriculum work is done in six-year cycles. And then the other items that we discussed are all as motions. So unless Rob or Tara's or anything that you wanted to add about the committee report or anyone else on the committee. All right, then I'd like to move, um, I'd like to take five point two and five point three together. Five point two is changes to the final exam schedule. Based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves the changes to the final exam schedule for students enrolled in Algebra I, Biology, and Literature starting with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. These students will be exempted from taking the scheduled exams for these courses. And reasoning for that is because they take the keystones, so it would have been a repetitive process. And then the Keystone Exam Testing Plan, that based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves the changes to the senior high school testing plan, which includes synchronous learning for non-testing students and provides an optional remote learning day for senior students on May fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on those two motions? Justin, anything you'd like to add on the exam?
No, the only thing I want to add is that, is that, um, five-three, the reason, the reason for that and seniors, uh, you know, having a flexible instructional on that day is really that, uh, on PSSA testing, the students typically had taken that test in the gymnasium, and the gymnasium was, can get it during, you know, May fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth extremely warm. And, um, so now that this is being moved back into the classroom, one, it's a, uh, cooler space, two, it's, um, a better environment for kids to take a, a, a test in the classroom as opposed to in the gymnasium.
And also, we don't have the staffing to cover all that. It used to be we could do it in the classroom, the, the testing, because we had enough staff, and we're.
Now that there are two people in each room, too.
Plus the numbers of staff at the senior high is as low as it's ever been.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Five point four, summer school. Based on recommendation of the committee, the board approves the posting, advertising, hiring of the staff members listed on your agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on five point four? Justin, anything you want to?
No, no, uh, those, we pretty much talked about them with the academic committee. Those are all, uh, very similar to, that's actually not very similar, exactly the same as what it was last.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Five point five and five point six, uh, five-five is the college and high school agreement. Based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves the cooperative agreement between Indiana Area Senior High School and Mount Aloysius College for the college and high school program for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves the training agreement with Grapton School to provide crisis intervention to employees as presented. The cost of the training and equipment will be paid for with access funds.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on five-five or five-six? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Five point seven, the twenty-four through twenty-seven Special Education Plan. Based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves the twenty-four through twenty-seven Special Education Plan as presented.
Second.
Moved in second.
Just a question, not Tara, reading through that, cause I, I wasn't at the committee meeting.
Yes.
So now with that agreement that we're approving tonight, so the MTSS professionals will be the ones that are dealing with, directly working with students and parents? Like, doing the interventions, doing the IEPs, and they'd be doing, working?
And you mean as our school psychs?
Yeah, I mean, within the special education plan, cause it talks about MTSS with, so that, I mean, that's more solidified in this plan.
Yes, 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 you're correct. Sorry, I didn't understand what you're asking. Yes.
Anything else, Tara, you'd like to add?
No, it's just mostly, mostly an update to, uh, our special education population. Um, we're not under any improvement actions, so I didn't need to put any plans in place for the entire district, and I have some professional development opportunities, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to compliment Tara on that plan.
Thank you.
It was a very comprehensive plan and very well-written.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, Sue. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry, or motion carries.
Summer music lessons, that based on the recommendation of the committee, the board authorizes the music teachers to conduct summer music lessons for students going into fifth through twelfth grades, never past or exceed five thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved in second. Yes, Tom?
I thought that they also took fourth graders.
Those are fourth graders now that are going into fifth.
Rising fourth grader, okay. Okay, just to be sure, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna shut them out as I picked up things from that year. We also, the committee also encouraged them to look at using some high school students to supplement, so some of the more advanced students might be able to help.
Very good. Anything else?
Our teachers here.
After any questions that might come up, but I talked to Mr. Perkovich, and we think we can make, uh, we can get the community service hours in for this program pretty easily. And, uh, I just thank you for supporting Music in Indiana. To create music education, so, like, in this fact, we had this for a long, long time, so it's good to get back. If you both guess.
Well, I'll have to think about it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion did carry. Okay. Okay, looks, you're up with policy and personnel.
Uh, we did have a meeting tonight, a short agenda. We talked about policy nine oh three, which is on the agenda for tonight for the first read, um, regarding public comment in board meetings. As a response to some legal action that has happened throughout the state. Um, we also discussed, uh, staffing recommendations for twenty-four, twenty-five, focusing on social studies. Um, and then we, uh, talked about some maintenance and administration as far as keeping records, uh, since we have electronic records and backups. You know, we don't really need to keep the paper stuff, it's redundant, puts a lot of stress on the staff. Pretty much what we talked about, so we don't have a lot of motions tonight. First motion is six-two, uh, board policy nine oh three. Uh, board approves the first read of policy nine oh three, public participation in board meetings.
Second.
Okay, moved in second on that. Ron?
Does that have to be?
Uh, would you like to, uh, comment on, uh, some of the historical background on this particular policy?
Yeah, I mean, Doc Shaver's correct. It really comes down to, you know, essentially, we want to make sure that we give and present the public an opportunity, um, to hear their ideas. And at the end of the day, it's not about the content of the speech, and that's really where that case was impacted, um, that they were being shut down or interrupted because of the actual content of the speech. So we've been able to go back and correct some of the, the, uh, policy language of nine oh three, um, that it really has to be focused on, focused specifically on, you know, are, is it interrupting the board? Is it, this, is it creating dysfunction within the board's operation to be able to get agenda items done? Um, is it threatening in nature? Uh, but it really can't be the content, right? Individuals may say things that boards don't, you know, wanna or care to hear sometimes that are negative, but that doesn't mean that it's not important to hear. So that's really the adjustment that the policy made. It's really given, you know, more of an open forum to the public.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions, or discussion by the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed, okay.
Uh, six-three resignation of support staff. The board accepts with regret the letter of resignation from Suzanne Ramsey, administrative assistant, effective July first, two thousand twenty-four, due to retirement, and authorizes administration to post-advertise interview for this position. Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussions on this?
She just does an unbelievable job over at the junior high for one, one person that worked with all the counselors and everything, so she'll be sorely missed.
I'll echo that. She has been absolutely phenomenal. She's been a huge asset to the district, and she'll be sorely missed.
Very good, and we thank her for her service. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, uh, six-four mentor program, MOU. The board approves the memorandum of understanding between the district and Ask Me for the purpose of clarifying the new membership program.
Second.
Moved in second. Uh, questions, comments, or discussion on this particular motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
All right, and lastly, extra duty, extra pay. Based on the recommendation of the administration, the following extra duty, extra pay assignment be approved, uh, to Jessica Vishi, hopefully I didn't murder your name, uh, junior high cheerleading coordinator for the fall at a, uh, a cost of one thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Tom, Buildings and Grounds?
Um, we had no meeting. Do you want to do a brief update on Eisenhower?
Yep, um, kinda had a slow week last week with all the rain. Um, one of the big things they're working on now is putting the footers in, um, in on Area A, which is the new addition for the auditorium, so they were moving pretty well up until last week.
Gymnasium.
The gymnasium, uh, not the auditorium.
They just added an auditorium.
Uh, but they were able to, to take that time and, um, get some work done inside. Uh, but hopefully, things are drying out over there right now, and they can get back into putting the footers in. Um, still is being erected, um, and some of the classroom additions where the, where the areas were that they first put the footers in. Um, so things are, are moving along. They're scheduling, um, to have steel, I believe, delivered for the gymnasium in the next week or two, so.
Yeah, those, those foundations were underwater, I'm gonna bring what we had.
Yeah.
That's true.
So I drove by on Saturday morning, just drove around the outside of the building. It was a, to see the steel up and the, and the trusses over the, uh, two new classroom additions was, was exciting to see. Um, the other thing was that the, uh, the storefront window frames, at least on the north face of the building, appear to be all in on that one, on, on that one side of the building, so it, uh, there's some definite progress that you can see. Um, not just a lot of dirt sitting around.
How is the masonry coming?
I, I, I didn't.
I'm asking Jared, are they moving, getting the masonry in place?
Yeah, I believe that. I mean, um, they were pouring cement. I mean, the, I guess, I don't know, call it a basement, but the areas underneath the classrooms have all been poured. Most of the block walls within the building itself are completed at this point, so. Um, they're just hoping to get this, more of the foundations in so that they, or the footers in so that they can start putting foundations up.
Are they, um, projecting, um, on, on schedule?
I was at a farm meeting last Tuesday. There, nobody voiced any schedule concerns at this point, so.
The ones that we, the ones we've always had?
Yes, yeah.
Very good.
The one thing, Tom, though, when I, I saw the steel up, the question that I'd like to at least, you know, just more out of curiosity, the columns in the corners of the new classrooms were shorter than the columns in the middle. They had higher steel or higher cement columns, and then the steel column above that, and yet the others seemed to be reset down. Didn't, didn't make a lot of sense. I mean, it looks like it's all right, but I was just curious as to why. And again, I don't want to really belabor the discussion tonight, but maybe for the next Buildings and Grounds Committee, we can, we could have that.
We still look into it, but my assumption is they're sloping the roofs a little bit.
Could be.
Probably as much as ten inches.
Okay.
We don't, we're not allowed to build flat roofs anymore, so we have to slope the, have to slope either insulation or the, the steel itself.
Okay.
Okay, so I would have two motions. Um, seven-three is a change order for Eisenhower. Board approves change order number three from Canfield Development Incorporated in the amount of two thousand two hundred dollars for additional pipe installation asbestos videos.
Moved in second.
Yeah, Jared's already approved this. Um, he has authorization up to twenty thousand. Um, and this is one of those things that they discover and remove and keep the project moving ahead.
Hopefully, this will be the last of the asbestos.
We always say that, but as long as they stay this, this size, we're, we're pretty lucky.
And Jared, could we get an update on the overall change orders, like positive, negative?
Yep, I have that. I, we'll have it at Buildings and Grounds, but I can send it out to the board, too.
Thanks.
Yeah, this is the only one we have this month, though, so.
Yeah, I don't have anything else. We won't have any to discuss at Buildings and Grounds.
Only day eight. It's only day eight.
Since the last time we did this.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Seven-four, request for proposals for architectural services. The board authorized the administration to request proposals for architectural services for the work of post-classroom renovation project at the high school for childcare, for the childcare program.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on, on this one?
But what exactly does this mean? I mean, when you say proposals, which are non-binding, I take it? So this went through, I didn't hear this, that this was going this far at the committee level, so.
In order, in order to do something this summer, we need to get, have a chance. We need to get the professional services lined up. We can choose not to exercise any of the program, but if we had to propose the hand and, and we decided to proceed with this project, we could, we have a chance. If we wait and wait and wait, then this is, um, will be in two thousand twenty-seven.
What kind of a budget are we proposing for it? I mean, I know that, you know, you don't, I don't think we should be in a position where we're budgeting around the proposals. What, and this was just recently moved suddenly into an expedited?
I, I think, well, I think it came out of the Buildings and Grounds, um, meeting discussion, the, the last Buildings and Grounds.
Yeah, but we kind of, we didn't get into it very much at that last meeting.
But I think, I think what, um, and I wish Rob were here tonight, but I believe, you know, his position was that we can't really define it yet exactly because this may wind up being something that the ICTC participates in. It could be something through articulation agreements with IUP or Westmoreland that that changes how this is gonna be reconfigured. Or it could be the standalone based on what was presented to us here a couple of weeks ago when we toured the building. Um, so.
But what we did talk about was, um, the whole science reconfiguration. In other words, looking at it from a, from a macro view or a heightened view of how we're utilizing the classrooms, and that kind of the discussion went to, well, then maybe we're not really ready to get, to decide much about this program right now. That was my understanding, so I didn't expect this motion to be tonight.
Oh, I apologize for that, but we had this discussion at the academic meeting about what, what they were attempting to do with certifications and some things like expanding the program. This is, this is a, this is simply asking to get proposals to. to do just that corner, not, not the science rooms. Okay? Um, um, that, that's a separate conversation, a little more in depth.
I mean, this is important, but we have to prioritize, I mean, prioritize. We have other things that, I mean, I walk into that high school down by the gym and there's a bathroom that's been out of order for six months now. That, I mean, so, I mean, we need to look at those things too. Uh, believe me, I think we need to do this for the, 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 I mean, I, we have other things too there, I think, that, that press in as well.
And we do, and we have a list, and I'm, I'm puzzled with the bathroom, why it's not been repaired. Um, it's certainly, um, it's certainly part of the capital is to keep those restrooms are functioning. I have no idea what the thing's out.
Doesn't look nice when you have a musical and all these hundreds of people coming in the community and the bathrooms there that doesn't, is out of order.
I, 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 I agree. There's, there's an awful lot of priorities in this building, and I certainly think this is a terrific program. It's just that I think it's up in the air about precisely what's gonna happen to it, whether or not, in terms of the, the, we talked, we talked about creating parameters around how we number these, these projects. Um, and we, it hasn't come before audit and finance. What I think it's important to avoid is that we don't get proposals and say, okay, so we'll build numbers around this. Where can we get the money if it's the will of the board to, to approve the program?
How do, how do we get the budget numbers without having engaging professionals?
I think that's a step that we're going, that we're premature at this point. I think that we have to, so I'm having trouble.
If, if we don't engage professionals, how do we get the budget numbers?
We had talked to our own staff about what they think this would cost. I just feel as though it's moving ahead and it's just been placed at a number one. And one of the things we're looking at is how many students it in fact benefits. And this is a relatively small program. It's an important early childhood education. I don't think there's much, there's anything more important, but it is, it's also offered at other places and we need to get our space better reconfigured so that it's, it's at an optimum level. We see now that with the tax base coming down, we're gonna have a hard time maintaining. So before we even get in, I understand you're, 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 um, an architect, so you're, you're concerned about how soon you can start work. I just don't wanna start until we've really had an opportunity to look at it through one more committee, at least audit and finance, and, and, and we've talked to our stuff, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, the thing is with what the teacher has to cope with to even make this program successful and beneficial to the preschoolers is outrageous. And it's been going on for years, carrying buckets of water into a classroom. Come on. Should we really be allowing that to happen? And I think that's what, that's where the, you know, would provoke, okay, let's find out what it will cost to either put a sink in there. They should actually have a small bathroom because they're taking these preschoolers out into the hallway to go to the restroom even when classes are changing. You know, you can't predict when a preschooler has to use the restroom. So I think that that was the main focus of, this seems pretty important to look into at least to see, you know, do we move them to another classroom? Can we use the classroom now? And then from that came all these other great ideas. Um, but we're not voting on those great ideas of the articulation of the vote, this, um, technical school, vocational technical school, all these other big ideas. But we're saying, hey, perhaps this class can grow. Now, the, the class is small, true, because you can only have so many high schoolers working with the preschoolers, but they turn away so many kids. Am I wrong? That they wanna get into that class.
Yeah, yeah, we have a max, we have a max number. Or so. Students could be in the program.
Right. So, so, you know, are we going to say, well, because we have to make these improvements that should have been made years ago and that we don't even want people to know about it, quite frankly, what this teacher's dealing with? Uh, or do we just get rid of the program? Which I don't think that would be very wise at all because we wanted to, we wanted to start, there's very few high schools that have pre-teacher programs fostering students to go into teaching. And this is one of those programs that could possibly do that.
No, I, I don't.
And I understand where you say you, you know, oh, this seems like all of a sudden we're doing, you know, looking for, for bids. That's true, and maybe I would feel that way too. But then I was in on the education meeting and I listened to the Building and Grounds Committee when you talked about this, so. It had actually started in Buildings and Grounds, I believe.
No, I mean, my, my two kids went to the program. I, it's unbelievable. I just, I mean, I, sometimes we have other things that have been on the list for eight years needing done and they stay at a cert, like, uh, one or two in priority wise, but then other things come along and bump it.
Because it has to be brought to the, the attention of the board. I don't know that there's a bathroom that doesn't work until you said that tonight.
We also had an opportunity that came up at Buildings and Grounds the last meeting, and, and a unique opportunity with grant money available in the state to, to, to work on the junior high roof. I mean, there's all kinds of problems that we have to solve and we have a finite, obviously a finite amount of money. I, one of my concerns is that you go and you spend money on this particular room, I was at the tour too. And it, it's obvious that it's not adequate. I can see that. However, if, in the, in a reconfiguration stage, that room might not, it, it may not be the same room and you've got a little tiny bathroom. I don't mind a sink. That certainly seems to be adequate, you know, something we would need, but, um, it just seems to me that maybe we need to expedite the, the whole plan instead of going immediately to what it would cost us to do this. Well, we, I don't know that we really know what we want. There's, I can think of so many problems that we've neglected that when you hear about them, everybody says, oh, dear. You know, so I think we're moving too fast on this and I'm not prepared to support it, although I realize that, um, you know, it's, it's, doesn't bind us. But I don't wanna, the, the tax base has, has come down rather quickly, rather recently, and it's something that we have to pay attention to. And before any project gets done, whether it's the junior high roof, whether it's fixing asphalt, whether it's, whatever we need in terms of Buildings and Grounds, um, the lights. We've talked about that recently. We've had some very expensive, solar. We've had some very expensive things on the table and it should be obvious to everybody that, A, we don't have the staff to get everything done in a timely fashion. And B, we, we're not, we, we haven't even finished Eisenhower yet. And here we are. So maybe what we need to start with is a master building plan in which all these teachers that need things are able to sit down and, and we figure out what we need to do, rather than what I think is just sort of plugging holes in the dam. And we have a lot of those. So I'm for the program. I think it would be nice to have college credit for it and the, all the rest and expand the program. But if we're gonna do that, it can't be in that room.
And Julia, a, a suggestion maybe is, you know, like we've done with the safety. We do have a priority list for the, the safety, the safety features throughout the school district. We have the, you know, the alert systems and we talked about, you know, a, a lot of those things. Um, what we could do, and, and my, uh, recommendation would be honestly to talk with the building principals on, and what, I, I could help with that in talking with building principals on what are the priorities of what needs addressed in your building? Like, I, I wasn't aware of the bathroom either, but I would imagine if we talked to the principal. Wait, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Um, I know the bathroom closed for renovation, but I believe they're, they're now running.
Okay.
They weren't here a week and a half ago when they were doing the underclassman basketball tournament and it was like that back during the basketball season in December and January.
Yeah, they were renovating at that time. I know they had some plumbing issues recently, but I know, I, I, the girls were open.
Yeah, it was just the one, the, I think, the mentoring by the water fountain down by the auditorium.
Yeah, I, I, and ju- just my thought was, you know, it's in talking with building principals. Building principals understand their buildings is good, if not better than anyone else. And, you know, if we could get them to prioritize some of the needs in their building and then maybe bring that back to the, to the, just the suggestion.
Well, I, I mean, I, I just don't wanna support this yet. Also, I didn't even get into, I was at a meeting of Ben Franklin in which we listened to a new alarm system. And I don't even wanna remind myself of what that all costs, but what it's going to cost in the future. It's all needed. Um, I, I put safety and security first. Um, but Sally, I, and Tom, I certainly understand you wanted to do it. And I, believe me, I've heard over the years it's a great program and the teachers done a tremendous job and the students love it, so it's, it's a hard thing for me.
And just to clarify, this is not spending a dime approving this tonight.
True. It's just to look at proposals. But that takes staff time and everything.
I think anything that gives us more information that we could take to audit and finance and then we can weigh that intelligently against the other needs. We need to know what our options are. And if this ends up, you know what? Lights are too much. We gotta do this, it's too much. If it has to wait a year or two, then it has to wait a year or two. But it doesn't hurt to get the information. We're not out and done.
I don't know if our own staff could give us an idea. They've certainly worked in bathrooms and whatnot before. I don't quite know why we have to go through this process that takes a lot of your time.
Because Chaney says he doesn't have the staff to do this work.
Well, no, I know, but he'd know what it would cost.
No, he doesn't.
Do we have leads for proposals?
We have, sure. We have, we have, we have people that Jared can contact. But, but it's, it's, this, this is part of the process. It'll be two, two, three weeks before you get the proposals back.
Yeah, the next step would, I would reach out to, probably people we've reached out in the past, um, asked for proposals. Usually they would like some idea of what type of work they're looking at. Um, so I can give them somewhat of an idea. This is, you know, is this a single project? Is there multiple projects in line? But at least what I will relay to them is, this is the only project we're looking at, so you need to price your proposal based on that. I mean, there's no cost to get those proposals. The next step would be if the board approves a proposal for which they would design the work for this project.
Or reject them, the proposal.
Well, you just don't vote, you just.
Right.
You just don't accept any.
Right.
So, I mean, you're, what you're gonna give is probably some type of hourly rate that you're gonna look at from the, they're not, they're not, this is not gonna give you an estimate for this work. All it's going to do is allow you to choose an architect who would then bill you to get that estimate before you vote.
Right.
That's where you're gonna commit yourself.
Now, maybe I misunderstood this, but I thought Tom was gonna, to draw up something to, to give 'cause he just can't call and say, hey, I want a proposal for this.
I'm, I'm, I'm sketched up something that, that the teachers have reviewed, but it, it's just a sketch. But it, but it, but it does define the edges of the project and it does give somebody, so rather than somebody parachuting in and, and looking at the whole high school, they can just look at that corner and, and they need to re-interview the teachers and, and finalize that design.
That'd be after they're chosen. So after the board approves hiring the architect.
Right.
Then that's where the cost would start to be incurred.
What would be, I mean, you know, about this science, this wing reconfiguration? Is it possible that the whole program could be moved to another facility or another part of the building? I mean, we're, we're fixated on a room. I don't know who chose it or why. I don't know anything about who got what rooms. I just know that we're finding out that there's, it needs to be done. This reconfiguration needs to be done.
I think.
Can I, can I say something about the current situation? Is that they have fifteen high school students. They have ten kids. They have twenty-five students in that room. They have three teachers. So they have, we've, we've got almost, we've got twenty-eight people minimum in that room. Okay? Plus all the storage is in that room. So the room gets smaller and smaller. You have all this activity. If I was doing a head start classroom, which I've done several, the kids cannot leave that room. That restroom is part of that room. There are no little restrooms anymore. They're all handicapped accessible. So the room is gonna be of a, a six by eight or so. Okay? It's gonna have the clearances and, and the, for, for everything. You cannot fit a restroom in that facility because that would take another fifty square feet away plus, plus a sink on the outside. So it's, so you make that room even smaller. I, I find it surprising that we have a daycare program without a restroom that's immediately attached. So right now, when your boy has to go to the bathroom, he has to get escorted down the hallway about fifty feet into, into what is in essence a public restroom by one or two people, and that's dangerous.
That's not my point.
No, 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 no. That's the situation we're currently in.
Let's say, I don't know, last time I worked on a bathroom, let, let's say the whole thing costs us seventy-five thousand or a hundred. I, you know, 'cause it's not gonna be inexpensive, we know that. And then we do this reconfiguration in the next eighteen months and we decide we want that room for something else. And we, this is a great program. We'd like to move it to Eisenhower School or we'd wanna move it down in another wing. I mean, you've just spent money that's been hard earned by the taxpayers. That's all I'm saying. And we're not sure this is the way to do it. So we're, we're all, I just feel as though we're jumping the gun.
And.
That's my point. I, I, I'm fine if that's what you wanna do, but I'm not gonna support it.
Okay, that's fine. Um, we have interviewed, we have worked with the teachers. We have looked at alternate locations in that wing. We have looked at locations around the school. And this is what the teachers thought that had the best potential for fulfilling the long-term needs of that program. Okay, it's displacing, it, it's substituting two, it's picking up two classrooms and a, and a office that's really used for storage in that corner and plus it gets the, it gets some snobber space. The program, the program, we either need to support the program or we, or we're in trouble. Okay, we, we shouldn't have this program.
I don't want it to be said that I don't support this program.
We shouldn't have this program without a direct access to restrooms. Kids should not be, be escorted down the hall with one, with one person. We're asking, we're, we're asking for trouble.
Well, I support the program, I just don't support your motion.
So, um, to your, to your point, Julia, um, when we toured that high school, they also showed us the science rooms. And I do believe we need to take a little, um, bit of a step back and look at the, kind of the broader perspective. I think there were seven science labs. It's my understanding that those labs are not utilized every period of the day for science laboratory work. So the question as far as the amount of dollars we spend, do you, do you upgrade all seven labs or do you only do three or four labs? And I think we need to have that discussion to kind of ferret that out. That impacts that allocation you were talking about. So anyway, the motion on, is anybody else?
Well, I'm just saying, we're talking about the senior, that building has not had any major renovations for thirty, over thirty years, and that's the next building that's up. So we need to pay attention. I mean, if we're looking at doing science, when we're looking at, you know, it's, it's been thirty, thirty-two years, I believe, since that building's been, had major renovations.
Uh, uh, I don't, I don't doubt that for a minute, Doug. That's a decision that the board will have to make because Ben Franklin.
Ben Franklin's never been done.
Yeah, so I mean.
There's no plan in place, that's the thing. We can vote on, we can vote on this because we've probably gone twenty minutes long on what we need to.
Well, I, I do feel as though in order to, to, to stay disciplined within our taxpayers and budget that we need a master plan and probably as soon as Eisenhower's done, I think of all the facilities, not just one building at a time, yeah.
The master plan would have been doing elementary projects six years ago, then it would have been the senior highs turned. So now, now that the Eisenhower's going to cost more than the whole elementary project from six, seven years ago.
And part of it is, is the pricing of the time and the interest rates and everything else. But, you know, a hundred thousand here, fifty thousand here, you know, pretty soon you got real money. That's all I'm saying right now.
Master plan won't mean anything when swimming pools brings another leak and.
Yes. We need, we need that, we call that the circulating system, I mean, it's endless, it's endless.
All right, does anybody else have anything to say on the motion on the table? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, one opposed, motion carries. Okay. Julia, I think you're backed up as audit and finance.
Thank you. We did not have a meeting tonight. But we do have one motion, and that's the approval, I, I move that the current bills be approved.
Second, second. We have three motions, I think, Julia.
Do we? I have returned the pages, sorry about that. Oh, you're right, okay, sorry. So did we just vote on that first motion?
Moved in second on the first motion. Any comments, questions, or discussion on current bills?
I didn't see anything.
Some larger construction bills on there.
Large bills, big bills, yes, okay. I move that the tax assessment settlement agreement, oh, I'm sorry.
Those in favor of six or eight point two, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, okay, now eight, three and eight, four.
Okay, starting from the top. I move that the board approves the settlement tax appeal. One, two, zero, six, four, CD, simple docket, twenty twenty-three. One, two, oh, six, five, simple docket, twenty twenty-three. One, two, oh, six, six, simple docket, twenty twenty-three, at all, as presented. Second.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on these? Jared, do we know how much these approvals are going to reduce our, our tax revenues from, from them?
Total of these three, which one of them is not changing at all, but the total of the other two will reduce our tax revenue right now by thirty-two thousand dollars.
Between the two properties.
Between the two properties, yes.
Okay. Further questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I move Indiana County Technology Center budget submitted for the information for the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five. Indiana County Technology Center proposed budget in the total amount of seven million, seven hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. This represents a five point nine, seven percent increase over the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The exact amount to be paid by the district will be determined by enrollment and not the board of the IASDA. A member of the ICTC approved the proposed budget of the operating committee for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five in the amount of, in the set amount of seven million, seven eleven, three thirty-two.
So moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on the ICTC budget? The only thing that I will add is that we're approving the budget right now under the assumption that all the current members will remain current members. Should that change, it would impact this, these budget figures. Questions, comments, or discussion?
Well, my comment, Walter, is that if the composition of the membership changes, then, you know, we have, I think we take about, what, twenty-eight percent of that budget, something like that, twenty?
About forty-two percent.
Forty-two, that much. I'd miss that, okay, then, you know, that, our, our share could go up that much more.
I do, there's something that, that we did receive. Jared, I know you have this, please send that out to the board. It's, we haven't already done that. It shows the various member shares and, and, and the budget allotments for, for the participation in the ICTC.
It's forty-two percent, I probably saw on the budget.
Further questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Down to the closing, there are no discussion items.
Can I just, I mean, just, just for Justin, is it something that you can talk at next academic meeting? I wrote an article last week about PSSA science testing is moving from fourth grade to fifth grade next year. Right now, I know, because my son, I have a son that's currently in fifth grade, they only get not even a half a year of science. So they're moving the PSSA fifth grade, it signs the fifth grade. And the kids, students right now only have less than a half a year of science. Is there something that curriculum wise, the district's working on to maybe make sure they get more science? So, because I, I don't want to be caught behind the eight ball and our scores are terrible because we haven't adapted.
Yeah, so there are the, the science committee is meeting, the new standards came out. The reason why they're changing the PSSA is because of the new science standards. We do have a committee that's been working throughout the course of this year to make sure that our curriculum is lined up. How that's going to impact schedules, we still haven't, there, there, there hasn't been any official change to that. But what I can tell you is we, we've been doing that pilot, we approved, maybe last month. We approved the pilot with Amplify, and then we had another pilot with the Open SciEd materials. So what we're doing is we're looking at, you know, if it does fit in within that half-year schedule, how do we make sure that what we're doing is lined up with what the standards are? There's also within our literacy curriculum, there is also an alignment, they do a cross, a cross alignment with our literacy program and science, so a lot of the science, the new science standards are hit within the literacy curriculum.
Don't get me started on that one, so go ahead.
So, yeah, the, but, but that's, that's what we're looking at, that's what that could.
I just read it last week and I was, I didn't know if we could, I mean, that could be on the, but you answered the question or not. Thank you.
Okay, we did have some enclosures. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was thinking of our debt, it's, our debt is, we pay forty-two percent of the debt.
We, say that again, please. We say, we pay forty-two percent of the debt.
Based on the current calculation.
And that debt will be paid off soon.
Next, four years.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay, is there any public comment on agenda items? Nothing heard, we did have some enclosures. We also had an executive session. Ron, do you want to go over the executive session for us?
Sure, Mr. President, executive session was to talk about the MOU with ASME and to give an update on the assessment appeals that the board approved.
Okay, thank you. Our next board meeting will be April the twenty-second at seven PM for general purposes. Our next committee meetings are April the fifteenth. Buildings, grounds, transportation, audit and finance on the twenty-second at, both at five thirty. And we have a free night on April the twenty-ninth. There will be no meetings on April the twenty. Before I have entertained the motion to adjourn, I do want to reiterate the air and banquet on April the sixteenth, next, next Tuesday. May I have a motion to?
So moved.
Moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, stand adjourned.